...showing you the quality of interview, the real spirit, the charmless show, the color of the great freedom of Thomas Ash. On behalf of me, King of the Council, I'd like to welcome you all to Exeter, Ashbourne, to commemorate the great Thomas Ash. I'd like to say that we know where we're standing, that those who knew him have hung this video today, especially members of the extended passion for him. On Easter Monday, 2016, the state ceremony took place here in Ashbourne. I continue to remember Tommy Thomas Ash and all of those who gave their lives arising from the events of the Battle of Ashford. This is one of a number of form of state ceremony events to take place around the country to reflect the special significance of each region, locations in the events of the 1916 uprising, and to honor and remember those who fought and those who died. Some of the most significant volumes of your action outside of building took place at Rattallas in Ashbourne, under the leadership of Thomas Ash, Richard Mulcavy, and Frank Lawless. Thirteen men in total lost their lives in Ashbourne on the 28th of February, 1916. Commandant Thomas Ash was tried by court martial and his death service was commuted to clean and serve to the life. He died in September, 1970. Last year, we remembered and reflected upon the ultimate sacrifice made by Ash and all of those who gave their lives in order to earn his dream of self-determination for the better of the world. And this year, on this weekend, the last two days of Hitler, has been very special for the commemoration of Thomas Ash and special for its heart. It's the team here for the death of Tommy Thomas Ash, the last story of 20 seconds of thunder in Rassau and the room in state ceremony. Yesterday, the Fingal Old IRA commemorating Thomas Ash, the duty ceremony here in Ashbourne, was put in march on the 21st of August. There shall be today, one of many of those state and base of home of the Lord of the Magi of Ashford. I've just wanted this book before the Lord of the Magi to tell you all about this. It's only fifty remaining states to make a place in memory of this man. However, he can't cancel out of the building the legacy of the T S S, meaning of the British National Party. Not, not, not that, Ash, where it's time to serve him, sir. It's fitting that Tommy Thomas Ash has acknowledged his state service. It's fitting that his companies have been all over and played his service. I mean, it's fitting that he and me play our own favorite part. The last Ash boy on the way to Mountjoy, the lead, would make the battle of the state ceremony. It shows a few words from my experience. But, it was appropriate. Few words from the poet who became soldier, from the soldier who became poet. The 1916 seventeen year term races were in blue service, spent for unmeasurable, and some spent in peace and continuation on the island of Warrnambool. The Ireland 2016 seventeen year program met the whites of support caused by history at the end of 1976. It's the days that came into the moment of honor of the military service and benefits of a huge level of being actually happening in this. In terms of nation of the program, as Major Sissis, he immediately examined our history and as he was then concerned with the future of the community, they think of scope, think about the events of 1916 and its legacy, who made this person meaningful to the people. I deplore to him from my experience, and to read you, for my latest and the latest legacy of Tommy Thomas Ash. Good morning. The order of the ceremony now is that I say hello to the first citizens of the county council. I'm going to lay a lead today after flag here, I'll go to the council's stand job, and I'll ask for you also to lay a lead.
Ad Nora, Ad Nora, Aden! Ad Nora, about Michelle! Aden, will you go? Stop! Aden, A P!
Now Ashford inside.
Adenora, pertes de wagana, pertes! Adenora, ring de wagana, ring! Adenora, chief!
Thank you very much, folks. After this, the formal party ceremony, I'd like to thank the local, national, and the hymns. So I'm doing a sort of, like, a little series of, like, celebrations, and also a certain, like, celebration.
Adenora, A P! Adenora, about Michelle!
...by four or five hundred euro that were willing to buy, and so without any further ado, I call out no questions. Accordia, 100 years ago today, a great man died. He died in horrific circumstances in a botched force feeding in Mountjoy jail. Personally, I've remembered the deaths of too many young men over the last few years, struck down in the prime of their lives. Thomas Patrick Ash was born in this bold county Kerry in January, 1885. He trained as a teacher in the La Salle College Watford and worked as a school principal in Lusser. And enjoyed writing poetry and was a talented singer. He was a member of the Gaelic League, the Irish Republican Brotherhood, and a founder member of the Irish Volunteers. Having been brought up in a Gaelic region of Ireland, he was an enthusiastic supporter of the Irish language, and his work brought him to the governing body of the Gaelic League. In 1914, he collected considerable sums of money during a trip to the USA for both the Volunteers and the League. Thomas Ash led the fight here at Ashford, and there's always been the question as to whether he or Richard Mulcavy, Dick Mulcavy, came up with the idea of guerrilla warfare. And I'm going to say that both of them did. Ash was in charge, and nothing could have been done without his permission. So I would say both of them were responsible for coming up with the idea that Michael Collins used so successfully in the War of the Dependents. Ash was the last of the 1916 commandants to surrender, and he was forced to surrender while winning, not losing. On the 8th May, 1916, Ash and Eamon De Valera were court martialed and sentenced to death. Both sentences were commuted to life, and Ash was sent to a variety of English prisons. While in prison, he wrote a poem, "Let Me Carry Your Cross For Ireland," Lord. Ash was in support of Collins' idea to nominate republican prisoners for election, while De Valera was against it. Ash was released from jail in June, 1917, under general amnesty. He returned to Ireland and visited Cinnard, his home, and began a series of speaking engagements. He was in clear support of De Valera, and in August, 1917, after a speech in Ballinlea, Watford, where Michael Collins had also been speaking, Ash was arrested and charged with speeches calculated to cause disaffection. Collins attended the court martial in Dublin Castle and wrote, "The whole business was extremely entertaining, almost as good as a Gilbert and Sullivan skit trial by jury." Ash was sentenced to one year's hard labor in Mountjoy jail. Ash, along with Austin Stack, who was also in Mountjoy, demanded to be treated as prisoners of war. Having been deprived of bed, bedding, and boots, Ash went to hunger strike on the 20th of September, 1917. On the 25th of September, 1917, he died as a result of force feeding by the prison authorities. He was 32 years old. He was a horrific death. The jury at the end questioned found, "We find that the deceased Thomas Ash, according to medical evidence of Professor McWeedy, Sir Arthur Chance, and Sir Thomas Miles, died from heart failure and congestion of the lungs on the 25th of September, 1917. That his death was caused by the punishments of taking away from the cell, bed, bedding, and boots, and allowing him to be on cold floor for 50 hours, and then subjecting him to forcible feeding in his weakened condition after hunger striking for five or six days." Thomas Ash's remains lay in state in Dublin City Hall before a funeral procession of over 30,000 marched to Glasnevin Cemetery on the 30th of September, 1917. At the grave site, volunteers fired a volley, and then Michael Collins stepped forward and made a short of revealing speech in English and Irish. This was the event that brought him to the public's attention. This was one of the events that turned the people towards Sinn Féin and the nationalists' cause. Collins said, "Nothing additional remains to be said. That volley which we have just heard is the only speech which is proper to make over the grave of a dead fiend." Collins wrote at the time, "I grieve perhaps as no one else grieves." He, a sympathy card to the Ash family read, "In federation of a gallant patriot and a noble friend." Ash was just per pto when he died. There's always the question, if Michael Collins had lived, would Ireland have been different? And Collins was shot down five years later, at roughly the same age, 33, as Thomas Ash. What would, what if Ash had lived? He was the commandant of the only successful action of 1916, and so would be entitled to be more highly respected than De Valera. He was the head of the IRB. He did not contest the West Clear election of 1917 and left it to death. Would Ash have eclipsed De Valera? Ash was a talented military leader, but Collins was emerging, just emerging as a leader at the same time. Ash was a nationalist with strong links to the culture of Ireland, to his language, music, song, and poetry. Ash would have pushed the nationalist agenda. Which side would he have taken at the treaty if it came to that? His sister, Nora, was a founder member of Fianna Fáil, and maybe that might give an indication of which side. Nora Ash gave a statement to the Bureau of Military History, and I quote, "Thomas was in the IRB at an early stage. Ash was very great with Tom Clark, Sean McGurran, and that crowd. Austin Stack often said that if Thomas had lived, Mick Collins would never have gone the way he did about the treaty. He had such respect for Thomas, who was a superior officer in the IRB." So that may be a telling comment. She also put in her, in her statement, "Thomas said, 'The police who took part in the fight at Ashford were not a bad lot at all. One of them asked for permission to go home to his sick wife, and Thomas gave it. They would do anything for him afterwards.'" So, we do have to be conscious that the main fighting at Ashford were overwhelmingly Irishmen on both sides, and almost all were from a similar background. Collins told a meeting at Ballinlea two weeks after Ash's death, "Thomas Ash is not dead. His spirit is still with us." Collins, of course, is a favorite of mine. Each day, as I walked to Broarley National School, my first national school, I passed the burned-out remnants of the Collins family home at Woodfield. Gregory was a family name, and Thomas Ash's younger brother, Gregory, accompanied Thomas on his American fundraising event. For about 15 years, I did tours of Kerry for American visitors, and I had a number of handouts. One of those was about Gregory Peck's Irish connections. Gregory Peck's grandmother was a national canard at this point, and he first visited the family home in September, 1968. Lyndon Johnson considered him for the position of ambassador to Ireland at the time, however it was not to be. A picture of Thomas Ash was home in the actor's home in Beverly Hills. Peck had another Kerry connection, and that was on the Ring of Kerry, on the Dingle Peninsula, at Carseveen, where Hugh O'Flaherty, Monsignor Hugh O'Flaherty, was born, and he starred in the film The Scarred and the Black about this Irish-born Vatican, Vatican person saving Jews during the Second World War. I want to say that I've been in Ashford more in the last two years than I've been in the rest of my life. I come for the excellent history being presented here, and the appropriateness of the events held here, and the frileness of the people involved. I want to pay tribute to a number of groups that I've been lucky enough to be involved with over the past couple of years. First of all, the Fingal Old IRA Committee, who have contributed so much to the commemorations over the past year and over many years. They were kind enough to allow me to use their monument for a reenactment of Pierce's speech at the funeral of Donalain Rosset. And of course, Rosset was another man from my parish. The Ashford Historical Society even came to Trimm to do a presentation on the Battle of Ashford. A very fair and comprehensive telling of the battle it was, tremendous work by such a local society. The BOACC group, Alcolic Allier, these made such a huge impact last year with the reenactment of the Battle of Ashford. I was very grateful to the group, I am very grateful to the group for assisting me on a number of occasions, and I got to narrate the reenactment of the Battle of Ashford to a crowd of 3,000 people, my largest audience ever. It's a bit of a countdown, sorry to say. The Ash family, and I was delighted to have Corey Ash speak about his grand uncle and auntie last year when a Thomas Ash banner was presented to the museum there, a family crowd of their family member. The local constables here, Sean State and Alan Tobin have been very involved, and as have Darren O'Rourke, Suzanne, and Claire. Thank you very much for all, for all you did. And all indeed have been present at so many of the events and played a blinder, and it is hugely, hugely to be thanked and our gratitude. And finally, but not, last but not least, and certainly not least, Kieran Magnum of the County Library, and Darren Gowan of the County Council, who did so much hard work last year for 1916. I wanted officially thanked them at the end of last year in Trimm, but the council wouldn't let me, so I'm thanking you today. And the amount of work that you put in here was tremendous, and I think it deserves a round of applause. All of the groups together, with all the people who attended the events, deserve to be thanked. It has been a very appropriate remembrance of the many people who died. But I would like to thank that we need to remember those who lived for Ireland as well. And that is how I would like to interpret Thomas Ash's poem, "Let Me Carry Your Cross For Ireland, Lord." I'd like for us to go forward and carry the cross for Ireland, and I'm proud to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Noel. I'd like to call on Gerry Long.
Thank you. I can hear you between the roots there. You can't be in Aaron's city, could you, not a glance, or be negative with shoplift, or small sauce, or box? Our lack of knowledge is more than our guns that haven't shot, they gave the egg long. It's a great pleasure and a privilege for me to be here in Ashford on this important day, the continuity of death of Thomas Ash 100 years ago today. I should introduce myself. My name is Darren O'Dooley. I work for the County Library. And my late father, Sean O'Donoghue, wrote this biography of Thomas Ash, I die in good call, first published by Anvil Press in 1970, and recently republished by Earthier Press. So, I want to talk to you about my, about my father. He too was a Kerry man. And he was drowned in Thallyfarth, West Kerry, on the 16th of May, 1917, only a few months before the death of Thomas Ash. From an early age, my father was aware of the legacy of Thomas Ash, having first heard of him from his grandfather down the man, who had indeed traveled to Dublin to attend his funeral. In my father's poem, "Give Me The Hama Shaws," he wrote, "Follow me of more the cluck around the freeest garden than the heat of the night. Go the tourist much but not all the way or dead man had. Long ago when cluck around the wheels for the farthest borders of my acquaintance, I heard the story of Thomas Ash from my grandfather's lips." My father attended St. Brendan's seminary in Killarney from 1929 to 1934, and then continued on to university college Dublin, where he studied Latin modern Irish and archaeology, graduating in 1938. He taught for some years in Port D'Arlington, and later when teaching history in the University Tutorial Institute, also known as Darras College in Dublin, he developed an interest in modern Irish history. He joined the translation department of the House of the Raptis in 1943, and from then on, researched regularly in the National Library, happily adjacent. Published his first book, Archogreas, about the Harvard, in 1953. His first published essay on Thomas Ash appeared in the Irish Language Periodical Fasbit in September, 1961. And on the 25th of September, 1967, 50 years ago, as an event commemorating the 50th anniversary of Ash's death, he gave a lecture published of late equivalent on the Hama Shaws, also published in Fasbit. An article in the Caption Annual of 1967 noted that he is a present working in full length life of Thomas Ash. I die in good calls, published in the 1970. In the acknowledgement, he wrote that my gratitude goes first and foremost to Sister Nora Ash. Without her help, it is the plain truth to say that this book could not have been properly written. Sally Nora Ash died on the 20th of January, 1970, shortly before the book was published. My father recalled, however, in an interview with his former colleague, Anine Conida, of the translation department, "The lady she amers loves close reason as she thought of it. She read the manuscript and she was happy with it." He dedicated a second book, a biography in Irish of John Boy, which was published in 1951, and Macarons of Nora Als, to my dear friend Nora Ash. He had known her for a long time, and in short memoir, which is in the National Library collections, he recalled many of his 256 years ago, where she spent her years of retirement with her companions in the Agus, given it's like old. I had known Nora Als since I was a student at St. Brendan's seminary, Killarney, as I wrote, about 1932. Having been introduced to her by my uncle, Father James Mann, of St. Augustine's Parish, Dean Molyneux in Iowa, who was a great friend of hers, I asked for a view to visit her in her home in Platair, but the visitor most frequentest mentioned retired from Rattgar Road. She was one of the best conversationalists I ever met, and her range of knowledge was wide and varied. She was an excellent teacher. A twin from Rattgar Road would give lessons in Irish gratis, so eager was she to give instruction in the language, which was the primary love of her life. She knew practically everyone who had been in the National Movement, and could be as sharp in her criticism as she could be sincere in her friends. She was proud of the Ash family tradition, and would enumerate the parts of Ireland where they accepted from Manchester Court. She was at home in any company, wouldn't front off, or greatly moved simply. I die in good calls, it's dedicated to, we are with her, I just machine to myself and my sister Ocean. We were very young in 1970, but we both remember visiting in Missash and having tea, having afternoon tea in a high-filling drawing room in Rattgar. My father noticed, noted that Thomas Ash's brother, Gregory, was also a great help. Unfortunately, for a son of a daughter, he showed her Hama Shaws, Priera, he told on me, can read. Of course, I got a lot of information from Thomas Ash's brother Gregory. And in the acknowledgements, in I die in good calls, he wrote, "To Thomas Ash's brother Gregory, my thanks are no less due, as well as for the store of recollections inimitably told, as for his cheerful company and many journeys through North County Dublin to cover again at first hand this rather familiar terrain and meet survival enclosures." And it's nice to think of my father about 50 years ago, exploring, exploring North Dublin and County Neath. My father's other books include Tremant Illusion, which is the story of the rescue of Phoenix Rivers in Australia. That came out in 1967. And then there is a very substantial two-volume biography in Irish of Donalain Rosset. First volume came out in 1969, second in 1979, and it was produced to a very high standard by the excellent publishing firm of Sorsha, still. My father got the highest praise of Sean O'Megarty and his wife, Beat, who founded and ran Sorsha, still, a wonderful publishing company. He subsequently changed, had developed, he had always had an interest in the scholarship of the county languages, and subsequently published a collection of essays called Seer Aynan, which is about five Irish language scholars. And this was followed by a biography published by... And this was followed by a biography published by Willie Nolan of Geography Propagations of the great German Catholic scholar, Kula Meyer. My father's last book of collection of essays, "Cantic Studies in Europe", which appeared in two thousand, the year in which he died, and that contains an overview of the development of cantic studies, essays on many great scholars, and an autobiographical essay. And there are also three volumes of poetry, "Bancol Irland", "Dea Taidig", and "Urgo Catall Ezandre", which, and many of those poems are in fact translations from French and Latin. As you may gather from this substantial number of books, my father really enjoyed researching and writing, and though happy in company, he was equally happy to find companionship in books. I remember one evening when both my sister Roisin and I rocked about, we asked her if you might speak on the phone. I mean, there ain't no blackface on the phone, I got a bit out of control there. But I won't be on my own, can't I spend the evening in the company of brothers and homework? I'd like to mention, and I know my sister Roisin would like me to mention, our mother, Mary Stone from Wexford, they mentioned they were working at Nester House and married in nineteen forty-nine. They're a very happy marriage. And our mother's quietly supported our father in every way, and her death in nineteen eighty-eight was a source of great sorrow to me. But eventually he returned to his studies and writing. And in this year, two thousand and seventeen, it is strange to think that he was born one hundred years ago, but he never said no to us. He was a loving husband to his father and a courteous, considerate, and gentleman. He had a profound taste in enjoying life. Roisin and I often remember his advice to us, "Quinn a gitanos on sail, enjoy life." The last verse of his poem, "Giv'n a Thomas Off", reads, "He'll be somewhere reported at the spalding in the south, the glory to ask, the Lord will freely step on us. Call who can see nor wish that linen tree a draw to the ground, to moth off o' clean art, to harf blue ardening. And spread it through and nail our linen loose mouth." A very rough translation. "Last year I walked the roads and plains of Thinkel, seeking accounts of him and speaking with the elderly survivor of the place. The holy time beaster, this family says to me, this heritage is in our veins, this heart is love, this affection is ours. Thomas Ashe spoke in Irish, a close friend's memory. The same will always be remembered." Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for listening to me. I'd like to thank Kieran Madden, particularly for giving me the opportunity to speak to you, and I am very grateful to you for your kind invitation. It's a pleasure and a privilege to be here, speaking to you on this exceptionally important day. For a moment, we need to let more than Nora live, so please don't stand up. I'm not pleased, so thank you. For a moment.
Remarque to Geralt. And just to note that copies of Geralt's father's book, I die in good calls, is available from your local library, and as any librarian will be happy to report, all of the copies in Ashburn are available now, but you can still request them and they're available to borrow. I'm now going to call on Thomas Ashe's grand nephew, Corrie Ashe, to address you.
Good evening, Geralt. We do weeds. Very kind invitation to be here today. It's a privilege and honour for me to represent the Ashe family and my son, Geralt, at this very important occasion. I would like to thank you especially for giving me the honour of paying a greet at your flag outside the offices here. It's two days in a row I've paid greets, one yesterday at the Rath Cross with Noel and Paul and the both of them are eight, which was also an honour and a privilege. I did just ask Geralt if I could say a few words, and they would be pure, because it'd be very difficult to follow the footsteps of both Noel and Earl, who spoke very eloquently and very proudly about my grand uncle. We as a family are honoured and privileged to be associated with the groups throughout the length and breadth of Ireland, from his name, Cinnard, up to Ballin Lee, up to Ashburn, and those groups who have kept his name and his honour and his vision alive for so many, many years. A lot of those people may not be blood relations of Thomas Ashe, but we as a family are proud to call them our best friends, but more importantly, part of the larger Ashe family for their efforts and for their dedication and time that is spent in keeping his name and his vision alive. So on my behalf, on the Ashe family behalf, just to thank you sincerely for all your efforts in keeping Thomas Ashe's name alive. And it has been a pleasure and honour to be here this morning at your occasion. So we do this, remarque.
Remarque of opinion, but yeah, I mean, the bar on the chase, I'm very much again for, and this one, remarque.